Call the meeting to order. Welcome to the August 18, 2015, meeting of the Ashland Town Council. For those who have been following what we're doing, we just completed a work session discussing possible legislation to deal with some of our issues with the hotels and motels in town. Now that we are in regular session, I'd like to begin the meeting with a moment of silence. Please rise if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask council to review the agenda. Note that this is a revised agenda from the one that went out originally last week. Do we have consensus to adopt this agenda?
Yes.
Okay, on our agenda this evening, we have three presentations. We have a presentation from Ms. Laura Lafayette of Richmond Association of Realtors about housing in the Richmond region. We have a presentation from Tom Wolfe about Ashland Museum Inside Out, and a presentation from Dan Barches about Light Up the Tracks. We will then have opportunity for citizen input, which people can come forward and address council with items which are not on the business agenda. We have three items on our consent agenda this evening. We have minutes for the August 4 meeting. We have a referral of Condition to Use Permit 05-0813, which is in reference to an accessory apartment, and we have invoices. We still have appointments to be made for Board of Zoning Appeals and Economic Development Authority. We then have time for mayor and council reports, management reports this evening from finance, planning, and the police department. Our first presentation is Ms. Laura Lafayette. Welcome very much. Good to have you with us.
Ms. Mayor, I appreciate that. Let's see. IT is not my specialty, so I'm gonna just... Where are we? How about the housing study?
It's open there on the bar, on the bottom.
Okay.
First one.
Got it. Perfect. And if I click on this, where we at? How do we?
The very top, from beginning.
From the beginning?
Sure.
Perfect. Okay, great. And let's see. This is my advance? Great, thank you all. Good evening. I'm Laura Lafayette. I serve as the CEO of the Richmond Association of Realtors. We serve over 4,000 Realtors who live and work in the Richmond metropolitan area. As part of that work, I serve as the Executive Director of the Partnership for Housing Affordability. The partnership has been around since 2004. It's a very simple goal, and that is to ensure that inadequate supply of affordable housing is a public policy priority in the Richmond metropolitan region. Our footprint mirrors the footprint of the Planning District Commission. A few years ago, we took the step of being really true to our words of partnership. The board of the partnership consists of the private sector, the nonprofit housing sector, and the public sector, and a few years ago, I came out and I kind of asked Charles, I would say I begged, but I asked, if we could have someone from Ashland serve on the board, and Charles and you all were gracious enough to loan us Nora, and she is a fantastic member of the partnership board. She's smart, and she cares deeply, and I have learned a lot with Nora on the partnership board. So, very quickly, two years ago, the Capital Region Collaborative came to the partnership and said, "We would like to see a study of the region's housing needs." And so, smart people know what they don't know, and I don't know how smart we all are, but we knew we couldn't do that alone, so we engaged Virginia Tech and VCU. Virginia Tech did a gap analysis. What are people in the region paying for housing versus what they can afford? And then, Virginia, VCU led us through a series of interviews with stakeholders. We did a workshop to talk about the solutions to the challenge. And that gives you an idea of what we did. So, in this report, and I of course walked out of my office today without the copies of the report, but we will get those to you if you've not had a chance to see it already. We talk a lot about what cost burden. So, you're considered cost burden if you're spending more than 30% of your gross monthly income on housing. I don't know about you, but the IRS doesn't let me live on my gross, so I always tell people that I think the numbers are underrepresented. And then, if you're spending more than 50% of your income on housing, you are severely cost burdened. I think you all probably know these numbers. This just gives you a sense of the income that, in the region, so $72,900 if you're at 100% of AMI. Obviously, we have thousands upon thousands of households that are not close to that. No surprise, particularly if you live in my world of real estate, there's no surprise really as to one of the large culprits of our housing affordability challenge. Even during the recession, when housing costs went down some, that didn't compare to the stagnant wages. So, we have stagnant, or wages going down, and housing costs going up, and it creates a gap. This is a reflection of the region's total housing deficit. So, if you're looking at, I'm looking left to right. You're looking?
Looking left to right, too, aren't you?
So, if you're looking left to right, obviously, if you, the less you earn, the more likely you are to be cost burdened in terms of housing. But what I always like to point out with this slide is, even if you very comfortably make your rent or your mortgage, this should be a great concern to you, because $862 million is what we would need to do on an annual basis as a region. We'd have to stroke that check every single year to close the gap between what people are paying for housing and what they can afford. So, that's $862 million that folks are not saving for retirement, they're not saving for their kids' college, they are not, they're not taking health insurance, they're not taking life insurance, they, and for the region's economy, it means they're not spending money on clothes, they're not spending money on, as much money on food, they're not spending money on electronics, they're not going out to dinner. All that discretionary income that makes our economy tick, way too much of income is locked up in housing. That's the challenge we have as a region. So, 130,000 households have some kind of cost burden. Of those, 50, over 55,000 are severely cost burdened. Oftentimes, I think, certainly in the past, I think a lot of people wanted to act as if affordable housing was a challenge for the city of Richmond and nobody else. That's just not the case. In every jurisdiction, there are households that are challenged to meet their housing needs. Now, it looks very different. You know, I came in, I knew you were gonna have a conversation about what do we do with folks living in hotels, and there's no one who would suggest that that's an optimal, that's not the solution. So, what are the solutions? And that's not how people would choose to live if they had other viable choices. There's no question about that. So, that's your challenge. In Chesterfield County and in the city, and in some parts of the city of Richmond, there are trailer parks that are in just horrible conditions, and everyone admits that. So, and then, the challenge in Charles City and in Goochland-Palatin is gonna look a little different, but the point is, everybody's in this boat together. Just to give you an idea of where Ashland stands, and I'm probably gonna refer to my notes a little bit here, you know, very specifically, if you look at your number of households, households as far as homeowners and renters, I mean, the good news is, if you look at the number of owner-occupied housing, that's a better number than the number of jurisdictions in the region. You've got a significant number of renter households that are cost burdened, and I would have to go back to tech before you ask the question, and know whether or not some of that may be that college students have been captured in your census data there. That's just a possibility. I don't know that, but I can go back and check on that. So, again, this is just another way of looking at your housing cost burden. Let's see here, so, of the number of households, and then, again, when you look at the breakdown of the percentage of AMI, and then, who is challenged, and obviously, not surprisingly, those folks making less than 30% of AMI are gonna make up, and then, less than 50% of AMI are gonna make up the bulk of the folks that are challenged in your region. Now, this isn't, now, I'm looking back at the regional snapshot, not Ashland, and here's what I think is interesting there. I think also, there is this presumption that renters are the ones who are burdened. And in our region, we have an awful lot of owners who own their home, but they are struggling with their mortgage for one reason or another. Again, this is a, I'm sorry, that was, that last shot was Ashland, just a small breakdown. And this is what the region looks like. It's almost a 50/50 in the region. This is another slide that I think sometimes surprises people, that when you're looking at folks that are burdened, many of them are adults living alone, obviously, one income, so they have to meet their needs in one income. But here's where I think this becomes a big challenge for our region. When we're looking at cost burdened households, look at the number of seniors. A full 40% of households that are cost burdened are over the age of 60. Now, what I say about that is, if you're under 29 and you're cost burdened, that's likely to be a temporary situation. You know, when my daughter graduates from University of Richmond, the only way she's not gonna be cost burdened is if she comes home to live with me, so I'm gonna be okay if she's challenged for a few years. But, because that should be a temporary situation, you know, when you get into your 30s, 40s, 50s, you're in your prime earning years. But when you're at 75, and if you're cost burdened, that's likely to be a permanent situation. So, I think a challenge that most of the jurisdictions have is that their senior populations are growing, and we know that the seniors are gonna struggle with their housing. And I think it raises issues about, do we want seniors to age in place? If seniors age in place, what does that mean to our older neighborhoods? And if they, if we want to give them options so they don't have to age in place, and they don't have to necessarily be isolated, then what kind of housing and amenities do we need to build for seniors in our communities? Just to give you a finer point on this, we could not, for this particular statistic, break out Ashland, but if you look at Hanover, so I've got two population scenarios, A and B, if you look at Hanover, you can see that Hanover is going to, in both scenarios, have over 9,000 households, growth of over 9,000 households in the 65 and older category. Interestingly enough, the city of Richmond is not seeing the kind of growth that the suburban jurisdictions, Hanover, Henrico, Chesterfield, are seeing. So, scenario B, just another different way of looking at it, but it's still, again, over 9,500 households in the senior population. So, very quickly, I'll shift. That's kind of the challenge, that's the data. Then, we, again, we engaged a number of stakeholders and asked them, "Okay, that's the problem, what's the solution?" Just to give you an indication, we asked a lot of different folks. We didn't load this up with a bunch of developers, you will see a line in there about cash proffers, boo hoo, but we didn't overrepresent the development community. In fact, local government is probably the highest sector that was represented in our conversations. Not surprisingly, why do we have an affordability gap in the region? Well, the economy and income. So, we looked at two different types of solutions, demand side solutions, supply side. Demand side solutions are, how do we help people perhaps earn more income so they can afford more housing? And I want to be really clear, this is not a report that says this is local government's fault, and local government is the sole solution, because this isn't local government's fault, and you're not the sole solution. And quite frankly, this report makes it very clear that we cannot grow our way out of this problem, in that we cannot put enough inventory on the ground to solve this. Half of this has got to be about preparing folks for jobs that pay more. I happened to be with Chesterfield Economic Development staff yesterday, and we spent the bulk of our time talking about how are we going to do a better job of aligning our career in technical education at the secondary level with the employers in the region, and I'm excited about the potential that Hanover has with a perhaps, beginning of a regional career in technical education facility. But again, if you look at this, how do we help people earn more deposit assistance, down payment assistance? There was some talk about the minimum wage, but I'm not gonna get into that. Again, I think it's, the answer is, a job is a solution to a lot of different problems, a good-paying job. On the supply side, okay, how do we create more affordable housing inventory? Dedicated local funding source for affordable housing. In the city of Richmond, they have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it's the only jurisdiction that has that. We are really working hard on identifying a dedicated source. There are, I think, 48 of the 50 states have Affordable Housing Trust Funds and local trust funds. If you don't have a dedicated source of revenue, trust funds don't do you much good. Greater integration of uses. In a town like Ashland, you see that, but that's not a natural necessarily in other jurisdictions. So, putting commercial and retail and residential, mixed use is a way to create affordable housing in a very non-threatening manner. You know, the NIMBYs or the cavemen, you know, cavemen, Citizens Against virtually everything, they don't necessarily come out if we're talking about mixed-use development. It's a very natural way to have the apartment over the coffee shop, next to the bungalow, next to the townhome. Where it's right, we need to think about increasing density. Not out in the middle of nowhere, where there isn't any infrastructure, but there are nodes in our region where we need to see greater density. Again, we did have the development community in the room, so of course, we had the eliminate or reduce proffers suggestion. So, here's just a few more. You know, we need to get the corporate sector engaged. Are there programs that they can do? We also need to draw down all of our federal dollars. I know federal dollars are shrinking, but it's incumbent upon the nonprofit community and the public sector to work together to make sure that our representatives understand that we need to draw down all the money that we are entitled to as a region. We are talking about a community land trust. I hope before the year is out that we will have a land trust established. I think initially, it will operate in the city of Richmond. There will be legislation in the 2016 session, also, in the General Assembly session, to enable local governments, if they so choose to create land banks. I think that's an important potential tool. And, you know, there's some other potential zoning tools that we can put in the toolbox. You don't eliminate an $862 million deficit overnight. You don't take 130,000 households that are cost burdened and eliminate that burden overnight. But with incremental change, we can see progress. Our goal, from the partnership's perspective, is to work with the local governing bodies, come to you and say, and I think we'll come to folks in January, when all the elections have sorted themselves out, and sit down and say, "What are your pressing challenges? What can we do to be assistance?" And that's gonna look different in Ashland than it is in Chesterfield. But we're lining up to have those conversations. We're not gonna come in here and say, "One size fits all." We really wanna come in with a very open attitude of saying, "You tell us how we can best meet your needs." That's what a partnership does. So, thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I know that you have other business before you.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
A question and a comment, if that's okay. The comment is, I've been working with Laura Lafayette for close to 14 years now, and I am greatly appreciative that she has, in large regional conversations, managed to separate Ashland out largely from Hanover in ways that we just didn't see 14 years ago, and that has given us much better numbers to work with and much better information, and we really appreciate that. My question's about mixed use. I was out in Short Pump on Friday, and what I think I noticed is that while those dwelling units are filling up, the retail stuff does not seem to be, and in fact, some things like the children's museum have moved out of the retail spaces, moved over to the mall. And we've been putting a lot of our eggs in the mixed-use basket for some time, but sometimes I don't, I don't see those retail uses filling up very quickly. Is that just a missed observation on my part, or is that a trend, maybe?
I think that depends probably more on just kind of the commercial market. Is there less expensive rent and closer proximity? The children's museum may have misread the tea leaves as far as the demographics out there.
Right.
You know, we've seen a restaurant, that particular development, that has gone, by the way, and I don't think that's been re-leased. And if you look at what's coming west of Short Pump, there's an awful lot of retail that's coming.
Right.
But then, on the other hand, there are apartments just coming out of the ground like mushrooms. What I like about mixed use is, it gives us a chance to have economically integrated communities. So, there are an opportunity for someone to rent, someone to have perhaps a townhome, and someone perhaps to have a single family detached, and also, to be less auto-dependent. So, I think we're gonna continue to see mixed use be attractive, because what I say is, you know, the empty nesters, whether you haven't populated the nest with birdies yet or your birdies have flown, you both, that, both of those demographics want the same thing. So, I think we're gonna continue to see it, but you're always gonna see kind of, I think, some commercial come and go.
Okay. Thank you for all that you've done for us.
Well, I should say that Fay has been my coach in many regards, especially on, "Can we have some data that looks like Ashland?" Yes. But I would never show up and know that you're gonna be present without having a little bit of Ashland data.
Other questions? Comments?
There was a recent seminar there, U of R, on housing. I believe you were likely there as well.
In March, when we released the study, yes.
Right. And it seemed like there was some consideration that if some higher-cost housing, at a certain level existed, that there'd actually be an upward flow.
Right.
It would free up more homes at the next tier down.
Right.
And I thought that was kind of interesting, in that if you look at Ashland, our housing demographic suggests that we actually, we would need more, statistically, we need more upper-cost housing.
Right.
Than lower-cost housing. And so, I just wanted to say that if different jurisdictions have different needs, specific to that jurisdiction, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we don't have a concern for affordable housing.
Right.
As you say, that observation at that presentation kind of suggested that there's different ways to get there than might be counterintuitive, that sort of thing, and so, I thought that was very interesting. But it seems like affordable housing is almost a byword, way too much of a byword, that's used the same way that world pieces, beauty pageants.
Right. I mean, who's gonna say they don't want affordable housing? The question is, where do you want it? And what does it mean? I mean, you know, that's in the, affordable housing is, well, maybe affordable to whom, right?
Right.
I took that slide out of my presentation, but it's become awfully hard for me to explain it, but basically, what we're talking about is that...
I'm sorry to bring it up.
No, 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 it's fine. I mean, you are an erudite group, you'll get it. So, it's simply the case that we're not gonna go out and build 30,000 units of 0% to 30% of AMI housing. We're just not gonna do it as a region, not overnight, anyway. And quite frankly, we all know that we, you can't cluster that kind of housing, that creates other challenges. What the study said was, if you reverse intentional, and if you built more workforce housing, housing affordable to people at 80% to 120% of AMI, and you scattered it throughout the region, there are people that, right now, are sitting in a house, and they could afford to buy a lot more house, right? They just choose not to for various regions, reasons. My argument would be something like, whatever the most attractive school division, school district is, if you put workforce housing there, some people that are sitting over here who can afford a little bit more, they're gonna go stretch, perhaps, because you may be giving them some inducement. And then, when the people that are making 150% of AMI, but are sitting in a house that somebody at 80% of AMI can afford, when they move up, that frees up a space for the household that can only afford that 80%. So, what we have in the region is a mismatch between what people can afford and where they're living, and I'm not here to suggest that people need to stretch themselves. But that would be the dynamic that the academics at tech observe, which is probably a case, you know, elsewhere, you know, everywhere. We know we need to build more workforce housing. I just don't want the affordable to get lost in the mix.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Ashland Museum Inside Out. It says Tom Wolfe, but I see Roseanne Shalf coming forward.
All right, now. How do you get from here to there? Right there, okay. And then, there. And how do I move slide to slide? This, this one here. I'm Roseanne Shalf, and I'm president of Ashland Museum. And very quickly, I want to tell you about Ashland Museum Inside Out.
Please remember, there's a microphone there.
Oh, yeah. I've got allergies, and I can't talk very loud, my voice cracks. This is about Ashland Museum Inside Out. And you all probably know already that Ashland Museum received a grant from Culture Works championed by Altria, and we also received a smaller grant from CSX. We've put that together with some budget funds within our budget, and we're going to create Ashland Museum Inside Out. But first, to illustrate some of my points coming up, I want you to look at these three places. You may know their historic significance, but many people don't. I'll come back to that in a minute. One of the challenges for Ashland is that we have all these wonderful historic assets, and we don't really, we don't always tell everyone about them. We don't have a good way of telling people about them. We do have a wonderful self-guided walking tour brochure, but the information is limited, and it's not easily expanded, and it's only available 9 to 5. As you know, the museum's mission is to present, to share Ashland's rich historical and cultural heritage with the visitors and citizens. And we've seen, you've seen our fantastic website, and our engaging exhibits that now go through 1940. And some of you have been to our children's programs or adults' programs, and, or maybe gone to one of the walking tours, the guided walking tours. But Ashland Museum Inside Out takes the museum to the next level. It'll bring our exhibits outside the museum walls, making them available 24/7. It allows access to Ashland Museum's growing repository of historical information, and it reaches new audiences. It reaches visitors to Ashland who are here when the museum or the visitor center are closed. It reaches younger audiences, or maybe young at heart audiences, who are accustomed to getting information, detailed information, from their mobile devices. And those who can, and also, it reaches those who can't manage the walking tours. It encourages heritage tourism, which helps drive our, this town's economic activity. Recognizing the town's marketing... Recognizing the town's marketing initiatives, especially attracting heritage tourists, we want to contribute by giving those visitors, those heritage tourist visitors, something to do while they're here. Ashland Museum Inside Out will help us accomplish that. We will do this in stages. First, this fall, we will install four area signs. This is a mock-up of one that might go next to the visitor's center. It would tell the history of, the railroad history of the town, and the history of the train stations, and especially the one that we've got there. Near the caboose and wine and cheese shop and the parking, the town's new parking lot, there would be one that tells about the downtown historic district, the business district. Near the center, the Hanover Arts and Activities Center, there would be one that has a map of the entire district, and something about the Hanover Arts and Activities Building itself. It's a very historic building. And eventually, we hope to have one in Berkeley Town that tells the African-American part of our history. This will require us to update our website with additional information and make it recognize whether it's being accessed by a home computer or by a mobile device, allowing it a simpler interface with a smaller screen, the mobile device. Then, later, after we've done the area signs, we will choose 20 initial locations of specific businesses, residences, and public buildings. And we'll put small signs for the residences, for the people that have yards. We will put a small sign right at the sidewalk, right on the ground. And for businesses, perhaps, where there's no distance between the sidewalk and the building, we might put something right there on the building. It might have the date of the house, and it might have the style, and then an indication of where to go electronically for more detailed information. Next spring, we will also create a new indoor exhibit at the visitor's center about Ashland's railroad history. We hope to have the first part of the program, a few of the areas, I mean, all the area signs and a few of the smaller signs, ready by September, when the bike tour comes. That's a real tall order. We're going to do our best. What next? In the future, we'd like to partner with the town, with Main Street, Hanover Black Heritage Society, perhaps through joint grant proposals, to accomplish the following: additional building and area signs accompanied by online information. Perhaps an outdoor kiosk, like the one at Orange County that you see here. You'll see there's, part of it talks about the town, part of it is town and county maps, and then there's a part that's historical. These displays can be changed on a regular basis. Another thing we'd like to see is historic street sign caps for every block that's in the historic district. We have an historic district that's very hard to draw a line around, and this seems to be the easiest way to delineate whether you're in the historic district or not. Many people don't even know they're in the historic district. And also, expanding and updating the existing historic district. I know we've, and that's pretty expensive, it's probably the most expensive thing on this list. I know we've begun conversations about that. Now, in closing, what's the historic significance of this, of the old post office, the 1938 post office? Well, it's on the location of the former Trolley Line car barn. The Trolley Line operated between 1908 and 1938. It took commuters to Richmond, to 814 Broad Street. Wasn't it nice? We had public transportation and two kinds of streetcars downtown to take our workers there. Next, let's see. Oh, now this one, those great big stones in front of K.A. I always wondered what those were about. During the construction of the National Cathedral in Washington, D.C., a train carrying marble slabs and these things, on its way up to D.C., derailed in front of the K.A. house. In order to get the cars back on the rail, they had to take the huge, heavy stones off, and they just left them there. Bet you didn't know that. Now, a lot of you know, this is one of Ashland's really great painted ladies on Duncan and Racecourse Street. But did you know that that is the home where Chris Chinnery grew up? And he is the one, the owner of Meadow Farm and the owner of Secretariat. There are all sorts of stories all over Ashland about these wonderful homes, and not just the homes, but just the stories behind them and the families that live there, that we would love to be able to tell. And that is the end of my presentation. I can answer questions, but again, I know you have a lot going on tonight. So I can answer questions tonight, and you are welcome to call me or meet with some of us over at the museum, and we can talk more about this.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Does this mean there's a second volume of your Ashland, Ashland coming out?
Yeah, right. This is it, the whole town.
It's called Ashland, Ashland, Ashland. Thank you, Rosie. Third presentation. Dan, Light Up the Tracks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council and staff. I've got old-timey paper handouts for you. Just to sort of give you a little visual sneak peek of what we're interested in doing. I'm Dan Barge, and I'm a member of Main Street. I wanted to go over one particular initiative that we have in mind, that we would like to see, maybe if we could get your endorsement or blessing on this evening. And we've called it informally, Light Up the Tracks. This is in response to a repeated need that we hear month after month from the retail establishments here and restaurants, and that is, we need to find better ways to bring more shoppers and visitors to town, or what they call feet on the ground. So that, this is one initiative in response to that, particularly during the crucial holiday retail season. That's our emphasis on this. We sort of did an assessment of, you know, what's possible here, what's feasible, and what's not feasible is a significant ad budget. We just don't have the size for that. So we're looking more for an in-run here. We're looking to exploit media coverage to the best of our ability and then some. So that's the thrust, is try to get our message across through the media, very similar to what we've been doing for the past six weeks with the bicycles around town. And I think you all will be delighted when you see some results of that in Richmond Magazine. The Times Dispatch was here today, did an extensive review of everything. We're going to see a lot of press on that, but I think this will garner substantially more during this critical retail period in the fall. At the same time, we need to find a way to break through that seasonal clutter with all the advertising and promotion that goes on in the buildup through the holidays. At the same time, we want to do justice to brand building. We want to continue our association with the railroads, with Ashland's history, as well as with our appeal and image as Virginia's Mayberry, which I think we certainly could lay claim to that. So the tactic is an unusual one, and that is, what we envision is to transform downtown Ashland, the business core, into a holiday greeting card for Amtrak travelers. During this time, basically from Thanksgiving through New Year's, it's estimated we have about 250,000 people going north-south, south-north, right through our town. We've got 22 Amtrak trains on average a day. That doesn't even include the 40 CSX trains that we have going through here a day. So it's tremendous volume. It gives us tremendous exposure. But more than anything, it gives us a hook, something unique to share with the media, because that's what we need here. What we want to do, what we envision, and what that sheet will show you, what we'd like to do is accentuate the roof lines of all of the retail and restaurant establishments on both sides of the track with LED white lights. It would make it sort of a holiday fantasy land, particularly as you go down those tracks. At the same time, we want to encourage residents to do even more than they've done in the past, and many have really done some splendid light displays. But we would like to get those, their neighbors, involved in this as well, so that you have a delightful visual experience from one end of town to the other, whether you're on the train, or whether you brought your kids down from D.C. or up from Richmond. You can motor the same route up and down those tracks and have the same visual treat for the holidays. We also would like to have a centerpiece, a focal point, and that would be a very large Christmas tree, a traditional Virginia holiday tree that would be a cedar. And that's already been donated by a property owner right outside of town. We actually have another property owner on Yow who has donated a gorgeous tree for the year after this. So we have them lining up, lining up for this. It's been very popular. But the tree would be situated about 20, 22 feet tall. It would be situated on that little plot of grassy property that's right across from Ashland Coffee and Tea. It's owned by the college. We've approached them. They're delighted with this program. They said, by all means, we'll help you erect the tree. We've talked to some people about the idea of having schoolkids create all the ornaments for the tree from recyclables. So again, there's another media hook. Plus, it's a nice thing to do, but we're thinking media exposure. We also would like to do a grand illumination. We've kind of targeted Saturday, December the 5th at 5:30. It's dark by then. We think we would have a built-in crowd, again, to delight the media, but a built-in crowd of the parents and grandparents of all these kids that have helped decorate the tree, plus everybody else in the community that would be interested in attending. We would also coordinate that grand illumination of the tree with all the homeowners, so they could flip the switch at the same time. We would have singing and song sheets. We would have hot cider and cocoa. So we would make it a really terrific feel-good, kick-off-the-season community event. The media, we think that of all the ideas we're cooking, this probably has the best potential to garner national TV attention for several reasons. It's a clever idea, this whole idea that a little town in Virginia wants to turn itself into a holiday greeting card for all these train passengers that go up and down at all odd hours of the night and day. It's highly visual, particularly for TV. We could have Amtrak mount a camera on the front of a train, Amtrak train, and go through town, share that video with the media, so they see the same visual experience of all these holiday lights parading by both sides of their train compartment. And the same thing for any motorist. They're going to get exactly the same experience. So what does this cost? Well, I think, given the media impact and the retail impact that this could have, it really does amount to pennies, particularly amortized. We've looked at how many strands of lights would we need for this. We think to really do it right, we would like to string about 3,000 linear feet of lights. These would be LED lights, so they only sip energy. They'd be very inexpensive to operate. The little mini lights, white ones, would be everywhere except the Christmas tree. And the Christmas tree would have LED lights, but the big, fat, traditional, family-colored lights. And as you all know that spot, there's an arc of evergreen bushes and trees that would provide a wonderful backdrop, and that would be several tiers of white lights, and then you would have the centerpiece gorgeous, multicolored tree. So I think we would have amazing critical mass there, right in the center of town. The cost, as far as we can determine, and I think this is pretty accurate, to buy 3,000 linear feet of lights is going to be pretty much right on the nose of $1,700. Those lights have a lifespan of 25,000 hours, but when you look into that, you find, well, the cords are going to give out, even if you only use them two months a year, they're going to give out in five to seven years. But it means we're only going to be spending about 300 bucks a year for the hardware. And then we would have the expense, the man-hour expense of putting them up with a cherry picker. So Main Street has been looking at this carefully, trying to figure out how to pull it off. We've met with Charles and his good people several times on this since the fall, and with a couple of you guys, and we've gotten, this thing has grown and enriched from all the input. It's really been a pleasure to work on it. But what we would like to see you all do, if you look favorably on this, is basically to give it your blessing, so that Main Street and Charles and his people, we can move forward and get done what needs to be done, and that is, get the lights and get them up. And Main Street is going to have a quick vote on this, I think, with the board here very shortly, to make sure that we have skin in the game. Somebody mentioned the other day that we were thinking, well, maybe the town puts them up and we pay for them, or vice versa, but something along that line. And so I think together, we can get this thing done on short order and make an amazing impact in the marketplace for the town people, but also for the shop owners and the restaurant tours, and that's what we were looking at primarily. That's it. Y'all have some questions?
Questions?
I do.
Yes.
First of all, congratulations on making something that seemed like a nice idea sound like a great idea, and on all the thought that's gone into this. I would suggest a couple of other small touches. I wonder if it might not be fun to get the entire community involved in donating the lights, and I'll contribute the first 25 sets. If we could put a container somewhere, I think it would just be, first of all, I think that's a good media thing, too. You know, Ashland, everybody in Ashland comes together to light up the town. And I think it could be on the marquee of the theater, help light up Ashland for Christmas. I mean, we could make it a real community event.
We might be able to put it on their website.
Right, absolutely. But the notion would be to get everybody, and then, where can we locally source those lights, so that our local businesses are also getting to sell those lights? I mean, I think there's lots of ways to play into that.
We've talked to the hardware store about it.
And then I think the other piece of this is, it sounds like all of your media stuff is great, but I also think social media can pick up and run with this in ways that it might be fun to do some YouTube videos. might be fun to do some YouTube videos to, to, to see the process, just so that it's getting exposure from every gang.
Tom Wolf is going to be in charge of all that.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I think I'm hearing that if, if all you need is a blessing, you have our blessing. Mr. Manager, you have any thoughts on?
No, I think it's, it's good for, for have multiple stakeholders involved in this. I know the college has been a willing partner in moving forward, and we appreciate their partnership, and I think that's very important. And also, we just sat in this room a couple of weeks ago and talked about ways of trying to help our downtown businesses drive traffic with construction and other things, so if we can find a happy medium of us all working together, I think that's important. So I'm, I'm happy to work with town staff and, and work with Main Street on whatever you all feel is appropriate for us to contribute, so.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to citizen input. At this point, may step forward and address counsel on any item which is not on the agenda. And for purposes of the citizen input this evening, I will suggest that the presentations we just had are not really on the agenda, because they're not business items for us.
Mayor Castle, I'm Arthur Brill, owner of Behind the Curtain Studio, 118B Thompson Street here in Ashland, and I want to thank Dan for all the wonderful work he's put into this. When I heard about what he was working on, I actually contacted him to, to meet with him, because I have had this, a similar idea for several years about doing something for Halloween, which is, which is one of my passions. And in fact, if you folks have been paying attention to the Bowman Body Experience that we've been working on, we shot new episodes on August 8th at the Ashland Theater of new shock theater Bowman Body Episodes. He is a longtime Richmond celebrity, is now 80 years old, and we've been getting a lot, speaking of media coverage, before the shoot of that week, Style Weekly did an article on us. I was on Good Richmond, the morning, Good Morning Richmond, the day before the shoot. We got a call from Virginia Currents about the shoot. The Hannover Local was there. WCVE just print, published an article about the shoot, written by John Porter, who was there. Virginia Currents is going to be there on the 26th when we show the movies that are, that we shot, the segments we shot on August 8th. So what this is all leading up to is a number of other business owners have been getting together to, also work together to try to figure out how to create this feet-on-the-ground experience. And to that end, we've, we brainstormed and came up with a brand called Experience Ashland, and what we want to do is we are promoting a October spooktacular, which actually begins on the 26th of October, when the Bowman Body Experience happens, and culminates on Halloween Day, October 31st, where we want to coordinate businesses to have storybook themes and have a lot of decor. To that end, I asked Dan how he got his process going. He said he spoke to Mr. Hartgrove. I've asked for a meeting with Mr. Hartgrove, which I have tomorrow at 1 o'clock, so I'm not going to get bogged into details of all this, but all I would say is the more support you could give, not only to the spirit of decorating the town for Christmas, but for Halloween as well, I think we can leverage that as something that says, "Hey, if you're looking for purchasing for Halloween costumes, come and look at our consignment shops. If you're looking for decor, look at some of our antique and, you know, you know, the, what do they call it? Refunk, upcycling, upcycling shops and that sort of thing." But it actually creates, not only looking at Halloween as a day, but just like Christmas, looking at it as a season that you can market, have people come, and use that in order to push and market the Christmas season as well. And on top of what Roseanne was saying in doing the Haunted History Tour, it's primarily entertainment. We tell ghost stories, but we do touch on the history of the town, and I very much direct people to the Ashland Museum website, encourage them to come back and visit the museum. So we get a lot of that interest. Some of the people are there for the spooky Halloween stuff. A lot of the people are coming for the history, and they're getting just a little, little taste of it with the tour, but absolutely, we're driving people to learn about the businesses, the town, the history, and come back and experience more of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Judging from the fact that I've already seen Halloween candy in the stores, I think somebody's already at the idea of making it a season.
For like three weeks.
Anybody else for citizen input?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Carolyn Coronado, 104 Robinson Street in Ashland. I just want to publicly thank the work crew that's been working on the streetscape. They're awesome. Yesterday, they offered to help me cross the street, and I'm hoping that's not because I'm 65 and look like I needed the help, but I sort of felt like my mom a little bit, and I'm, I'm working towards that age, but, and today they even offered to build a bridge for me to get across, so things are looking up. So I want to thank the crew publicly for that, and they really, they make offers before you even ask. They just seem to see the need, and then they come with a solution before you even. I mean, they are really fantastic. They are like the dream team on the streetscape. As difficult as the streetscape is for the businesses and for the pedestrians, it's, they're really making it as easy as possible, and they communicate very well. So I want to thank them. The other thing I want to talk about with regard to the streetscape is I'm a little bit concerned, and I'm hoping that maybe we head off a few things that we could use. I remember Councilman Murray saying early on, when he was sitting on council, the concern about infrastructure and being forward-thinking, and I'm somewhat concerned that we're not addressing putting in water when we have the water pipes open and exposed. It was something that didn't get done for every business or property owner on the one side of the street, and I think that if we're putting in vegetation and we are putting in bike gardens and, and for the businesses to be able to clean their windows and spruce up, I think that we're making a big mistake by, we've already lost an opportunity in one street. I really would like to see that we address that before we start closing up the street. I'm not quite sure how to go about it, but I think that the business owners or the property owners, at least if there's a cost involved, if they be approached what that cost would be, to be able to tap in now and pay for it. I have a feeling that there'd be a number of businesses that wouldn't want to lose out on that opportunity. It improves their property and it helps them address some of the issues of maintenance and gardening. And the other thing is, on the one, I know on this side of the street, we are, I've been assured that we're putting in electric on each one of the poles. We did not do that on the other side of the street, and in light of now where we're going with putting lighting, it would be really helpful if we had lights on every one of those poles, because instead of having to string them across to get to the lamppost that's on one side, and the ultimate lamppost on the other side, it would be nice if we could have tapped into each one that was there. So I don't know what else, while we have the ground dug up, that we might want to consider putting in there. I wish it was fiber optics. I wish an ATM machine. I think these are all some of the things that we need downtown to be progressive and to be forward-thinking, so I would like you to consider and maybe look into where we might be falling short before the ground is sealed up again and we miss the opportunity. And the other thing, the last thing, is signage. I met with Councilwoman Pritchard. I have spoken with Councilman Trevette. I think our signage in the downtown, our parking signs, as I've pointed out, are not strategically placed, so people, especially when we're in the situation that we're in temporarily, but even in the, the other times, you know, the downtown parking sign is up where the banner is, and coming over the railroad tracks, nobody is, it's scary enough to cross over the railroad tracks without looking all the way up to a banner to see where your public parking sign is, so. And actually, the consensus among the businesses, quite honestly, has been, in my experience, is that to stick to signage in the downtown that's more recognizable as national signs of, especially because the lay of our land is very, very difficult for transportation. We have one-way streets, one-way, the other way, how to get around to the visitor center, and sometimes, even though it's quaint and charming, it is really not easily recognizable for people to direct themselves in the proper way. So I would appreciate if you look into that and balance it a little bit, and the creativity may not be the best directional signs. Thank you.
Anyone else for citizen input? Okay, at this time, I will then close citizen input. Appointments. Are we ready to make any appointments? We have one outstanding application that we interviewed, and we have not yet made a decision one way or the other, so please review that. Under Mayor's report, I will be brief, because I was, oh, we have a consent agenda, and I skipped over that. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. We have three, well, it would have been terrible not to do that. Three items on the consent agenda. We have minutes for the August 4th, 215 meeting, 2015 meeting. We have a referral of a conditional use permit, CUPO 5-0813 to the Planning Commission. That's for an accessory apartment on a residence, and we have two items under invoices for council approval to Talion Armstrong, $195,484.56 for the work on the Safe Routes to School Project in July, and for council information to Atlee Signs, $17,602.30 for the creation and installation of way finding signage throughout the town. Any questions about these items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The Atlee Signs, the creation and installation, are we, are we all, starting a process at this point? This, this money is for creation and then followed by installation, or do we already have designs in mind? So where we are in the process?
We went through a committee process probably in 2009, 10, 11, somewhere in that timeframe. It's been a while, and came up with all the designs. We had business owners involved, Main Street involved, council members involved at the time, and now it's actually constructing and after location of all those signs, putting them in. So the design happened a long time ago, and now you're actually getting the creation, as in building them and installation of them.
Summer of 2010.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, we can send out what those signs were. I mean, we have a PDF of what it was, and, you know, the process that we went through, actually, we brought it to council, and council approved the package at the time, so that's what we're doing.
Yeah, not trying to be, act like I don't trust earlier judgments, but again, this is something that's five years old. I'm trusting that people use their imagination, creativity properly at the time, but the vote for spending the money is on us today, and so again, I just, anytime I'm voting to appropriate funds, I'd like to know what, what I'm buying, you know, what, how I'm spending the, the taxpayers' money, so I would like to see what they look like.
Yeah. Just for reference, this is a, this particular invoice is for council information. The money has already been appropriated, so this is an indication that somebody actually sent a bill against that appropriation.
So it's not really for the creation? It's only for the installation, I guess, at this point?
We already committed to spend the money. This is just the invoice following up on the commitment.
Mr. Trevette, you and Mr. Murray might be the only ones who have not seen the signs. I think the rest of us were on council when everything was approved, and it was a pretty large committee that included a lot of business owners as well as citizens, as well as, as Main Street, and, and was pretty well-vetted.
Right, and just five years is the period when we revamp, or at least revisit, the comprehensive plan and other things, and so I think a lot of, there's a lot of changes. I appreciate the continuity in Ashland for, you know, since the 1850s, but again, it's, it's good to bring something out and just, if there's fresh faces, you know, regardless, not on council, but just in the community, I think it's good to bring something out and, and dust it off before spending the funds. As you say, it's already been spent, or it's already obligated.
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move we pay the bills and approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion and a second. Mr. Kimball.
Mrs. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Henson?
Aye.
Mr. Trevette?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mayor Spagnu?
Aye.
All ayes.
And now back where I was going, I scribbled over my, yeah, I scribbled over much of the page, is why I missed the consent agenda item on the, relatively little to report since I was out of town for most of the last week. I did meet with the Main Street leadership and had a very productive discussion of their perspective on the theater. A reminder that the work session that we had originally scheduled for this coming Thursday has been canceled. That work session will now take place next Tuesday on the 25th at 7 o'clock. That will be a work session where council will sit down with Main Street leadership, and we will discuss the feasibility study, concerns and questions that have been raised about that study, discuss options for moving forward. At some point in September, we will be scheduling one and possibly two work sessions where we will actually open up for public input. The meeting next Tuesday is open to the public, but is not intended that we'll be taking comments from the public. And that's pretty much what I have. Reports from other council members.
I do not have a report.
Things will ramp up again in September.
I'm not worried.
I attended the August 11th MAP General Membership Meeting. The most exciting news out of that particular meeting is not necessarily news, but rather excitement about an upcoming event, the October 3rd Casino Night, now called Ashland's Casino Royale, that's co-hosted with Market Ashland Partnership and the Ashland Coolanas Club. We were there last year and just had a blast the entire time. It is a great opportunity to support the organizations that support the town so much. Tickets are available on the Shop Ashland First website or at a variety of businesses in town, the list of which can be seen on the Shop Ashland First website or the Ashland Coolanas website.
Location?
It is at the supply room.
Cool.
Okay, let's move on to management reports. Finance, Mr. Farah.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You have a report in front of you. You can see our cash balances. Obviously, most of our activity over the past 30 days has involved preparation and then actually being involved with the town's audit. That went on last week from Tuesday through Friday. Happy to report at the end of it, there are no major findings, not even really any minor findings, so I do expect them to come back with a completely clean audit. So that went very well. One other note I have here for you is that I did participate in a meeting with Hanover County's Treasurer and Commissioner of Revenue's staff. They are currently looking at moving away from the accounting software that they use and that we also use at the same time. We are going to explore the possibility of joining in with them on an RFP to potentially take advantage of their kind of larger scale and ability to possibly get a better price for an accounting software. Basically, since I've taken over, I've wanted to change and been waiting for the opportunity, and really, from the beginning have said, "When Hanover goes, that's when we'll take a serious look at, at changing over." It's very important that the two, whatever the, both of us are operating on, is that they integrate all their tax data, is our tax data, that we get every piece of it directly from them. So it is important that they're seamless in one way or another, but I'll keep you in the loop as we move forward on that. Excited about the possibility of partnering with them on that. Let's see, what else? We're continuing to train Divya. She is doing an outstanding job in her first, I guess it's four months now. She's only received, I've only received compliments on those who have had interactions with her, so it, it's been a really positive experience, and she's doing a great job. And then you have our delinquencies there as well. We continue to plug away at meals. It's gone down slightly, not as much as I'd like, and lodging. We have one business that you could probably guess, if you wanted to, which one it is, so we're fighting with them as well. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Farah? Questions for Mr. Farah? Thank you. Planning Department, Ms. Amos.
Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting coming up, we, the August meeting, we unfortunately had to cancel, and we had a public hearing scheduled, because we ended up not being able to get a quorum for various reasons. So Grants Garage Conditional Use Permit, we'll go to the September meeting, and we also have a conditional use permit that you all just referred this evening, for the hunters for an accessory dwelling unit on their property. We'll also have a public hearing for the Planned Development Districts, Planned Unit Development, Planned Shopping Center, Planned Mobile Home. So we'll have that at the September meeting. We have kind of brought back up this Virginia Tourism Corporation project, if you all remember, we did the Drive Tourism event, and got a lot of great feedback, and we were working with Tom Wolfe on that, and we had a little hiatus, but we're gearing back up to narrow down those projects. There are really about three projects that came out of it, and we hope to get some subcommittees set up for those three projects and help them move forward, and utilize the grant funding that would be available to us to run those projects. We're also continuing to work with Punch and our partners with them, Shaco Mad, we're meeting with them tomorrow, and they're the ones who are going to help us with the mobile advertising, making sure that we're out there on all the mobile sites that are available, and that we're being well-represented. On September 11th, hopefully, you got that invitation, Train Town CrossFit will have their grand opening ribbon cutting at 3:30, between 3:30 and 4:30, and you're invited to stay at 4:30 for their, what are you, exercising? I don't know. Their workout, I don't know. So you're encouraged to stay past 4:30 if you are willing to do that, I'm sure Chief could help you out. It was mentioned earlier this evening, the Historic District update, and it's one of the things I wanted to let you all know about, we have a meeting with Department of Historic Resources, and we anticipate applying for their grant next year, next spring, and hopefully getting started later in the year if we receive that grant to update our Historic District. And the great thing about their grant is, if they give you the funding, they administer it. So they would be the ones handling the update and getting all the information. It's really tedious, if you all worked on it back in 1983 or had any parts of it, it's a lot of work. And so to have THR resources, not only monetary resources, but staff resources to help us with that, would be quite beneficial. We've talked about doing similar advertising for the streetscape project that we did with the other side, and we are doing that, and one of those is to have the raffle. So if you are out shopping, or if anyone's out shopping, they spend more than $10 in any of our downtown businesses, any of the ones along railroad or around, just around the corners, you can either email that receipt, or drop it off here at Town Hall, or text it, and then we'll have a weekly drawing for a $25 Town of Ashland gift certificate, which is good at over 40 businesses. So make sure that you're encouraging people when you're out shopping to send those receipts along. And I think that's, I had a whole other list, but I think I'll stop at that. If you have any questions, I'll answer those, and I may be able to help you on any of the other transportation projects that might have come up since your last meeting.
Questions for Ms. Amos?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Last but not least, Chief Goodman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You have my report, and I'd be more than happy to address any questions you have off our monthly report. One big thing I want to point out is just, I guess, a mid-year gut check. Crime is down about 1.5% over this time last year, so for the first six months, we're very happy where we're at in that one measurement of our performance. National Night Out was two weeks ago, and we appreciate all of our neighborhoods and the robust, I guess, attendance by a lot of our folks, even though the rain clouds were circling around us the whole time, and we appreciate several members of council who came out and rode along with us as well. I have another session of coffee with the clergy and the chief this Thursday at 7:00 AM at Chick-fil-A, and that's more for our viewing public, but we've been trying to do that this summer, it is a kind of a pilot project, to make sure that we've got those open lines of communication with all of our houses of faith in Ashland. This is the time of year where we will be doing more speed enforcement in our school zones. School starts in less than three weeks, both for our public schools and our campus, our college campus. So we will be moving our visual speed sign around in different school zones to remind folks to slow down, if they're used to going through their school zones maybe a little bit faster while the kids have been off this summer. And then we'll be following that up with marked patrol cars and police officers within the week right before school, to again, provide a little bit more of that reminder, visual reminder for folks to slow down. We don't want anyone to get a ticket, but we've got to keep our children safe, both our older children and our younger children. And lastly, the manager has afforded me the opportunity to give some pretty neat news tonight, I guess. Traffic enforcement and traffic safety has been a big priority of the Ashland Police Department in the last eight years, and you've gotten used to the last couple of years getting some pretty interesting news from us. This year, we again won first place in our ISS category in the state of Virginia, and the Virginia Chiefs Challenge, Law Enforcement Challenge, for our efforts in public safety. Last year, we won third place nationally. This year, we won second place nationally. So Marie Kemp and her team, and of course, all the members of the Ashland Police Department do just a fantastic job. So I made copies of the list of award winners, both state and national, it's two-sided, paper, and highlighting where we are, just so you can kind of see who we are stacked up against. I'll take any questions that you have.
Questions for Chief Goodman? Excellent news on the award, and as always, our best thanks to our officers for the work they put in.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, Council.
Anything else from anybody else? We are adjourned.